Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight for the Santa Clara County School Board of Education, Area One Representative Forum for the November 5th, 2024 general election. I'm Sandra Martinetti, a member of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto and a moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nationwide organization that was founded in 1920 after women won the right to vote. The League envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League is nonpartisan, meaning we neither support nor oppose candidates or political parties. Our organization has two distinct roles. One is advocacy for public policy issues that we have studied and developed formal positions. The other is voter service, which brings voters impartial information on issues and candidates. The Voter Services Team organized this forum so voters can learn about the candidates running to represent you on the Santa Clara County Board of Education. Those candidates are, in alphabetical order, Grace Ma and Jessica Spicer. This evening, we are hosting a forum, not a debate. There is no rebuttal, and we will not allow any personal attacks. Candidates have been asked to focus on their own campaigns. For this Zoom webinar, only the candidates and the moderator will have their microphones activated. You can find a recording of this forum on our website, lvwpaloalto.org, and our YouTube channel. Whenever this recording is aired, it must be shown in its entirety to ensure that no candidate's statements are used out of context. We'll wrap up the forum by 8:00 PM. We will keep time using a computerized stopwatch. The candidates have agreed to respect our time limits, and I will enforce them. In lieu of opening statements, each candidate will give a one and one-half-minute description of their qualifications to serve in this office. A question-and-answer period follows. Candidates will be called on in alternating order for each question, and will have up to one minute each to respond with four questions allowing for one and one-half minutes. Questions for this forum have been solicited in advance for all those who signed up to attend. During the forum, attendees can send live questions by email to forumquestions@lwvpaloalto.org. Find this email in the chat box. Note that audience members cannot chat, cannot comment in the chat. Questions for this forum, sorry. In lieu of closing statements, for the final question, we will ask, what question do you wish we had asked in this forum that we didn't ask? This gives candidates an opportunity to talk about an issue or legislative area that the candidates feel deserve more attention. Each candidate will be allowed one and one-half minutes to answer in the reverse order of the opening question. Okay, let's begin with Ms. Ma. Please describe your qualifications to serve as a trustee on the Santa Clara County Board of Education.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for having this candidate forum tonight. My name is Grace Ma. I'm running for reelection to the Santa Clara County Board of Education, Trustee Area One. I've devoted the past 23 years advocating for quality education for all Santa Clara County students. I'm a champion for all children, working for our youngest infants and toddlers by co-founding the Strong Start Coalition to expand pre-kindergarten access in Santa Clara County. And my dream is for universal preschool for all students, because when a child starts kindergarten behind, it's just really hard to catch up. This year, I've also worked with severely disabled special ed students, supporting the reopening of a medically fragile classroom in Gilroy. The county of education has a very different role from the local school districts and district boards that you all know and love, and you have direct interaction with. But the county office supports the most vulnerable children, including incarcerated youth, migrant education, foster youth, and the Head Start Federal Preschool Program for low-income families. The county office is a safety net for these underrepresented children who usually fall through the cracks of local school districts. I support parents and families in under-resourced communities to be engaged with their children's education. This year, on the Head Start Policy Council, I've been working in coaching leadership skills for parents who are often working too with more jobs and are English-language learners. I champion innovation in education and accountability for public charter schools so children in underserved communities have equal access to a quality education. And I value recruiting and retaining high-quality educators who are the heart of every school.
Thank you so much. Very dramatic. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Spicer.
Thank you very much. I am, as Grace stated, the SCC BOE and the SCCOE is the safety net of public education in the county. I grew up very low income with a single mom who was alcoholic, drug-addicted, and often brought abusive men into our lives. My dad died when I was six. School was a refuge for me. With the help of my teachers and my school community, I was able to gain early admission to Wellesley College and later on UC Law, San Francisco. And because of my background, I made it my life's mission to give back to kids born into difficult circumstances like my own. I have the lived experience of those kids that are served to the most underserved of our county, and I plan to use that perspective, and I have used that perspective on the LASD School Board and plan to use that on the SCC BOE. Furthermore, I have 27 of the 29 trustees' endorsements in the catchment area of Trustee Area One, because they believe that I am the best person to represent them on the Santa Clara County Board of Education. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next general question. Explain the importance of this position to voters, and we'll start with you, Ms. Spicer.
Thank you. The importance, what the Office and Board of Education does is that they, as I mentioned, they are the safety net of public education in the county. What they do is they serve the most low socioeconomic kids in preschool, the most medically fragile special education, alternative schools, the court schools, so juvenile detention, and alternative schools. They are also the appellate body for charter schools, inter-district transfers, and expulsions. And what is most important to all 31 districts in the county, they are a service provider to all of the districts, and in fact, the treasury of all 31 districts. As a local trustee, I actually have my paycheck signed by Dr. Dewan, who is the superintendent. Thank you.
And Ms. Ma.
Yeah, this position is pretty important, and it's also kind of obscure, because we don't directly work with a lot of the community directly. I mean, as I said earlier, the local school district is the people that you vote for. They appoint a superintendent, they hire the principals and teachers that everyone knows and loves. But the county works kind of at an abstracted level and not higher, because we have no authority over the other districts. The districts are autonomous, but we do, as Jessica mentioned, have a lot of administrative services. And mostly, our services are directed towards the 31 school districts. California has, I'm sorry, Santa Clara County is probably the sixth-largest district in California. So we have a lot of districts, and some of them really range from small one-school districts up in the Santa Cruz Mountains down to some of the largest school districts in the state, like San Jose Unified School District and Eastside.
Thank you. All right, next question. What is the role of the Santa Clara County Board of Education versus local school boards? And I know you both have touched on this a little bit. If you can be as specific as possible, that would be helpful. Ms. Ma, we'll start with you.
Okay, so the Santa Clara County Board does do some things directly with students at the local level. And as Jessica mentioned, it's mainly in the appellate area of inter-district transfers and expulsions. So students who try to go to a different district, they get turned down. They can appeal that decision to the County Board of Education. So then we do, as a board, listen to these cases, talk to the students, talk to the families, talk to the administrators, and decide whether to uphold the appeal so that the student can go to the district that they wanted to, or whether we deny the appeal and the student has to go back to their original district. Same thing with expulsion. So students who are expelled can have their expulsion appealed to the board so that their record is expunged if we uphold the appeal or we uphold the expulsion and go with the district's decision to expel the student.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Ms. Spicer, could you elaborate?
Yes, thank you. I do love the dramatic noise of that timer. It brings me joy every time, so thank you. Local districts, because I am a local district trustee, we do hire, we have one true employee, which is the superintendent, and we do approve the hiring of all the other employees on consent. But the one employee we truly have is a superintendent. We approve curriculum, we approve the budget, we approve facilities, big contracts, et cetera. And Grace and I have touched upon what the County Board of Education does ad nauseam. So I don't think I need to cover that. I think it's been covered. But I really don't have anything to add on that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, on which board committee do you believe you'd be most effective? And Ms. Spicer, we'll start with you, please.
Well, that's a good question. I think, I don't know all the board committees that the County Board of Education does have, but I do know one of them is the actual Committee on Board Policies. I am an attorney, and therefore, I am very much into policies, law, legislation, et cetera, and also pretty hardcore at editing and whatnot, and very detail-oriented. So I think I would like that. Anything based in equity, I'd be interested in, because that's what I truly care about, making sure that all kids, no matter how they're born or what they're born into, get the best education possible. So those are two areas of interest for me.
Thank you. And Ms. Ma? You're muted.
Unmuted. Okay, thank you. In my 17 years on the board, I have been on basically all the committees, and all of them have certainly their strengths and weaknesses. But as far as where I think I'm most effective has been on the Legislative Action Committee, because we have lobbyists in the county office of ed, and we have gone with our lobbyists to Sacramento every year for probably 10 years. I started the, I co-led the Strong Start Coalition, and we had advocates from that coalition go together. There were about 20 of us who would go and sit in the governor's office, governor's conference room, and just go and meet all sorts of legislators to talk about the different kinds of things which were important for us, mostly in early education for Strong Start, but in addition, other important education avenues that the county office was pushing. And the county office has very often.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and candidates, for the next question, the next four questions, you will have one and a half minutes to respond. Okay, we're on question number four, and it is, can you give an example of a situation in which you were a minority voice in a board action or issue, and how you collaborated to reach a successful compromise? Ms. Ma, we'll start with you, please.
Okay, so the one that probably is the most recent, and in a sense, most touchy, is our board passed a resolution on the Palestine-Israel conflict. I'll just put it that way. And it was a resolution which was originally brought to our board on consent by our board president and one of my colleagues. And I immediately said that, you know, we can't just have it come on consent, which would be almost a, you know, undiscussed approval. So I asked it to be pulled and that we tabled it for further discussion. And we did end up having two meetings to talk about the resolution and all of its implications. I was very much in learning mode, because I didn't know a lot about the conflict and the good, bad, and the ugly. So that's why I really pushed to make sure that we tabled this discussion and got some time to really learn about the issues as much as we could. As far as being in the minority, I think because we had such a difficult conversation, we had about 150 people attend for public comment. The first meeting, about 170 come the second meeting. And there were a lot of emotions going back and forth. But I really worked towards common values and mainly child-centric. And that's where I think that we did come to a compromise.
Thank you so much. Ms. Spicer.
Thank you. The best example I can come up with, really the only one I can think of right now, is we were deciding, we have a 10th school site, and we had to decide where we were going to be placing the facilities on the site, whether it would be at the corner of Pachetti and California or Showers in California. Myself and another one of my board members, Steve Talio, thought it should be, the building should be at the Pachetti and California. And the three other trustees wanted it to be on the California and Showers. In the end, we had a lively discussion as to why, you know, I wanted it to be there. Steve and I wanted it to be at the location that we thought was best, and they gave their reasons. In the end, what was chosen was California and Showers. And a lot of our concerns that had to do with safety were answered by some of the answers that my other trustees and the staff had given us. And so in the end, while I still voted against the majority, I am very supportive of it, because in the end, it will be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our fifth question, you will also have a minute and a half. What is the greatest challenge for the district budget? What philosophy would you bring to the budget process? Ms. Spicer.
As it relates to the county office of education, they are really truly flat-funded. So that is a really big challenge. So it is always making, as it relates to if we have to cut or if we're trying to make sure where resources are going, it's always going to go towards the classroom, towards the students, to make sure that it is going towards education. So any cuts are going to be made as far away from education as possible, because we're in the business of education. All the money should be going towards the education. I would also be focusing on advocacy with our higher-up electeds, be them our supervisors, our assembly people, our state senators, et cetera, to make sure we are getting more resources. And some of the funding formulas change as it relates to county office of education, because if we think we have it bad at the local level, it's worse at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ma.
Thank you. As far as how to help and address the budget, that's something that I do keep a pretty close eye on. My experience in sales has me, you know, looking at quotas and numbers, and I'm a recovering engineer, so I really like those kinds of details, nuts and bolts. I usually question and look at the budget every month when we come up with our budget revisions. And so it's very near and dear to me. One of the things that I've been striving for is to get a more collaborative budget-setting process, where we would have a study session for our budgets and call in our stakeholders, not only our bargaining units, the teachers and the staff, but also our customers, who are school districts and the other departments and branches. We don't have a lot of, I'll just say, collaboration on the budget at this point. We do talk about priorities from the board, but to really be able to help the budget would be to make it a more collaborative effort, to have input from all stakeholders. And as much as we can, as Jessica mentioned, just try to get more money. I mean, we can't just throw money at the problem, but California is so underfunded in education that it can only help. And that's why I've supported the Proposition 13 Variations with the Split Roll and the efforts in the proposition back then, I think it was 55 at the time.
Thank you. All right, for our next question, again, you will have a minute and a half. Empowering child wellness is a board priority. What substantive policies and practices involving child wellness services will you specifically champion? Ms. Ma.
Thank you. So child wellness is one of the major items that is on our board's agenda, if you will. And we have done a very good job in the last couple of years to open wellness centers at a number of high schools and middle schools throughout the county. And that's been through a lot of great grants that we've been able to win, and also some, not necessarily one-time funding, but one or two-time funding. So it's kind of running out. But we have been very creative with financing and being able to work with school districts to try to get collaborative blended funding and be able to continue those resources, because child wellness is just super critical. After all the trauma that a lot of kids went through with the pandemic and the social isolation or the social stigma or, again, isolation because of social media and, you know, tendency to work on phones instead of working on people. So child wellness is super important. And one of the things that I've been working with, with one of my colleagues, is considering creating a youth crisis summit, because there's a lot of issues that are addressing our youth right now, besides wellness and mental health, things like the fentanyl and opioid and vaping epidemics. And so it would be really good to have a summit that talks about all these crises for our youth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Spicer, your response, please.
Yes, thank you. I, you know, yes, wellness is an issue. And mental health is very much an issue across all 31 districts in the county. The pandemic, it was already an issue, because in Santa Clara County, Silicon Valley, there's always pressure to do well, et cetera. So we already had that going into the pandemic, and then we had them in a pandemic. So not only did the students come out of it a little worse for wear, as did the adults, be them staff members, be them the parents. And, you know, it's not mutually exclusive. These staff members and teachers were also parents. They definitely did not end up on the other side completely okay. So I really do want to focus on making sure that all stakeholders in education are made better. And, you know, one of the great things that has happened is that we've all ended up with more wellness centers across the county. A lot of our local districts have focused on upping our spend, et cetera, giving more resources to mental health, be it our staff members or our students. But I do agree that we need to somehow have more convenings as it relates to all the adults involved, including the parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, for our next question, again, a minute and a half for your response. As a leader in education, building trust within the organization and community is vital. Give one example of an action that you've taken that demonstrates accountability and transparency. Ms. Ma.
Accountability and transparency. I'm eating up time while I'm thinking. This is a tricky one. I guess the first thing that comes to more of my mind is with respect to transparency, that I've always been very transparent in my dealings with my colleagues, in dealings with constituents. I feel that I've been very open and accessible, that I've had people from, you know, not only within the county office of ed, staff members, teachers, parents, and students across the county, but also locally in the area here, North County, talk to me about just different issues that they've had. I will always offer to, you know, get coffee, tea, or boba, and talk about what's going on and figure out how I can help when I can. I mean, there are a number of things that we're limited on in the board as far as specific jurisdiction, but there's a lot of experience in advocacy, in working with the administration, and figuring out how education bureaucracy kind of works. When I developed the Mandarin Immersion Program in Palo Alto, it was a real dance, working with administration, school board members, grassroots parents.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Spicer?
Yes, thank you. Really, a lot of my work in the last eight years as a trustee for Los Altos School District has been all about communication and transparency. I, from close to the very beginning, started writing a blog post every board, before every board meeting. I would read my board packet and then discern all the information and write what the average person could expect from our board meeting in plain English. Not only did it, you know, give them the information, it allowed me to actually digest the information from these packets much better than if I didn't write the blog post. Also, I have always made myself available, whether it's one-on-one when anybody wanted it, but also had coffee office hours about once a month. More so prior to COVID, it's become a little less of a thing after COVID, although I'm seeing people more on the one-offs. But I would have office hours all across my district in different areas, not just in one area, to make sure people could come and just talk to me about areas of concern in the district. And I plan to do the same at the County Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, candidates, we're back to a one-minute response for the remainder of the questions until the very last one. Under what conditions would you vote to reject a charter school's renewal application or put conditions on a renewal? Ms. Ma.
Okay, so, I mean, I can talk about specifically the Bullis Charter School renewal, which we just had a few weeks ago, and then we had it a few weeks before that, and then we kind of had a third meeting about it. At one point, the decision meeting, we had six different motions. We had the meeting go until 1:30 in the morning. We had about 120 or so people come who wanted to speak. Unfortunately, we weren't able to accommodate all those people who wanted to speak, but they were there, and a lot of them children. And so some of the conditions at that time were presented by our charter school department, and the ultimate recommendation was to approve with conditions. But some of the conditions were very difficult for Bullis Charter School. And so there was one point when there was a vote to just reject the petition.
Thank you. And Ms. Spicer, how would you make those decisions?
I would, you know, as it relates to a charter school, I would want to know that they were moving the needle for their students, that they were, you know, there are three tiers of charter schools. There are high-performing, mid-performing, and low-performing. Bullis Charter School is a high-performing school, but they had been put on notice for not serving or all students, not mirroring the district in which they are located, which is Los Altos School District. So I supported the ultimate decision of the SCC BOE in renewing them. So I supported the ultimate decision of the SEC BOE in renewing them for only five years. They were entitled to seven with conditions that involved a lot of the work towards them getting mirroring the district in which they're in. It's important to note that Bullis Charter School since then has four cases of disenrollment of special education students. So I do hope that the county in its investigation comes up with a concession. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to question number nine. What examples do you have of working to reduce inequities in educational quality? And Ms. Spicer, we'll start with you.
We have, the experience we have in reducing inequities in education has really been focusing on the achievement gap in Los Altos School District. My entire board cares about moving that needle. And what really helped us is actually during COVID, we were able, and post-COVID, we really focused on making sure we knew where every last student was and where their weaknesses were and where their strengths were and what was working with each student. And we've been using that every year in order to make sure we're moving the needle. So really doing more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ma?
So I would say that the greatest effect on reducing inequities in education for Santa Clara County has been the work of our board in approving a number of charter schools, which specifically are addressing the underserved students in some of our poorer, if you will, less resourced areas of the county. And so we haven't had every charter school work, but a number of them have. And a number of them actually have been written up by the Stanford Credo Report, which has done research comparing charter schools across the nation. They've done, I think, three reports. And in the second report, I think they actually called out the Bay Area charter schools as being, you know, noteworthy, you know, above, above kind of the average. There are good charter schools and bad charter schools. And so not to say that everyone is doing it, but the inequities that we've demonstrated in Santa Clara County have really been reduced.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now question number ten. How do you view the relationship between the board and the superintendent? What role does each play in decision-making and setting priorities for the Office of Education? Ms. Ma, we'll start with you, please.
So the role of the board and superintendent is is a little tricky. And it's also a little different in our county because we have an appointed superintendent for the county as opposed to elected, which is what almost all of the counties in the state. There's only five that have appointed superintendents. And so the superintendent is an employee of the board. But she is the, you know, operations manager, she's the CEO and runs everything. We only have the one employee, so we are not involved at all with employee relations, negotiations, not like a local school district where at least in consent, you approve the contracts. We have no, no interactions there at all. The superintendent has a lot of control and activities that the board basically advises on.
Thank you. And Ms. Spicer, how do you see that?
You know, Grace is correct. I've done my homework as to the difference between the local district and the County Office of Education. And the thing is, is that there are some mutually exclusive responsibilities that the Board of Education has and the Office of Education has. There are completely different silos. There are some areas where they work together, like the budget, et cetera, because they, but it's mostly in separate silos. But it is the duty of both the board and the Office of Education, the superintendent, to work together to make sure that they are all working towards the same goal of, in this case, the county is actually doing a lot of work as it relates to equity and education. So working towards that end, to doing what is best for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, question number eleven. In the area of special education across all age groups, from early education to post-senior, highlight one program that is going well or one that needs improvement. We'll start with you, Ms. Spicer.
Oh, thank you. That is, that is a hard question. I'm gonna start with needs improvement because really what it comes down to is, all of our programs, is that we are so woefully underfunded. When special education was created bajillion years ago at this point, it was never fully funded. And we have all varying ranges of needs in special education where they can be costing very little resources up to a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars per student at a local district. I think ways we could be doing better is making sure that we are getting resources where they're needed and perhaps maybe more collaboration in our CELPs to that respect. You know, I think we're all doing well at trying our best, really.
Thank you. And Ms. Ma?
I would say that as far as what's going well, we, as an example, I think you were asking for examples, that we have a very successful, long-term gateway program down in Gilroy that has a wonderful facility that services our South County students who are, you know, far away from everything else. But they have a very nice facility with a swimming pool and teachers that are trained. And they were thriving very well there. These are kids who have wheelchairs, who have spinal injuries, et cetera. What didn't go so well for those same students is when a decision was made to close that classroom. And a lot of those students were moved to sites that were an hour and a half away on a bus. That wasn't so well. But the end of the story is that the classroom has been reopened, so we're back to.
Thank you. All right, we're on to the next question. Early childhood education helps close the achievement gap. And universal pre-K will be fully implemented starting in twenty-five, twenty-six. What other programs could be enhanced or new programs initiated to help reduce the achievement gap? Ms. Ma, we'll start with you, please.
So I have been striving and working for universal preschool for forever, almost. And so it was a big cheer and a big relief when the governor signed into legislation with Joe Smidion as the spearhead to have TK for all four-year-olds by twenty-twenty-six, as you say, to have another grade in school for free. And so my next thing then is three-year-olds. Let's work down that line and get those three-year-olds in there. Because those first five years are crucial for kids to be able to learn, hear vocabulary, interact, just really absorb like a sponge that they are. And anything that we can do to bring universal preschool all the way down from infants, zero, all the way up to three-year-olds, since we've got TK now, is kind of my objective. And so funding, advocacy, all the above.
And Ms. Spicer?
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. One of my big ideas for closing the achievement gap is in fact trying to make it such that the County Office of Education becomes a convening body to have all students graduating out of our schools with the A to G requirements met. The A to G requirements are required to be met for you to go to a Cal State or UC school. Basically guaranteed admission to one of those schools. You're not going directly to Berkeley, but you're going to a Cal State or UC. For that to happen, there has to be more resources towards students becoming, reading at grade level by third grade and doing algebra by eighth grade. And so I'm saying convening body because the County Office of Education doesn't educate all these students. So make sure a resource for all thirty-one districts across the county. And really start, I do agree that we should start as early as possible, three years old, but we need the money for it also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question. How will you stay informed by your constituents about the county education issues that concern them? Ms. Spicer?
Like I mentioned prior in the transparency question, I would make sure that I am meeting with the stakeholders pretty regularly, whether it's the local trustees in trustee area one and beyond, for sure. I am in the leadership of the Santa Clara County School Boards Association, so I exposure that way. But also making sure that I'm in each one of those communities, learning from all the stakeholders, whether they're trustees, whether they're staff, teachers, administrators and parents. I will always make myself available. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ma?
So I try to stay informed about county issues, especially in the North County area, by just meeting people and going to meetings of organizations and groups that support our kids. So one example is the Challenge Team, which is held in the Mountain View Police Department. And we are a number of, sorry, elected officials, school board members, superintendents, nonprofits, probation, police, safety, just to talk about all the at-risk you, all the risks that our youth are going through. And they meet once a month, and we have all kinds of discussions from fentanyl to even sex trafficking. We had a very sobering discussion by a nonprofit organization up in Marin who talked about the pervasiveness of sex trafficking in everywhere across the board. I also attend a Sunnyvale Challenge Team meetings, which likewise has kind of that local area. But again, talks about what's going on with our kids and our youth in those areas.
Thank you. Okay, and for our next question. How can the board coordinate the sharing of best practices among the thirty-one school districts in the county? Ms. Ma?
So the thirty-one school districts, as I said earlier, are pretty autonomous. They do, you know, convene and meet each other. We have school board association meetings. Once a year, there's a big annual meeting across the state. We have our county group of school board members who meet. We have our superintendent has convenings of all the superintendents, the thirty-one superintendents in the county. So there's a lot of meetings and efforts to communicate, share best practices, you know, get as much as we can from, you know, everyone else's advice and coaching. The problem, of course, is that we're all really busy. So we can't always spend as much time to have a special meeting just on this or just on that and bring these best practices together. We have in the past tried to do that with charter schools and local school districts.
Thank you. And Ms. Spicer?
There are a couple of ways that we can convene on best practices. One is something I helped institute this last school year, lack of a better term, as president of the Santa Clara County School Boards Association. We had always had these lunch and learns. But what I added was actually having specific subject matter that we would be discussing during that lunch and learn. And I would have three or four trustees that I knew to be more experts in those subject matters, start as conversation starters, and then the rest of us actually chiming in and asking questions. So that's one way. Another way is, in fact, the Office of Education does do a lot of convenings on specific subject matters. I just attended one, I think yesterday, on school safety. I've been to one on the budget. I've been to ones on teacher housing. So those are a few examples. There are plenty more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an additional question to ask tonight. We've done so well in staying to our time limits. And let me read you the question. What is the one issue-based campaign promise you have made? And how do you plan to keep that promise? And Ms. Spicer will be starting with you.
All right, so my, you know, big issue, you know, part of my platform is that I, I plan to make sure every student, no matter their background, personal experience, et cetera, gets the best education possible. And that teachers and staff members get all the resources to that end. And so the way I plan to keep that promise is in fact making sure that the County Office of Education becomes this convening body towards students graduating with A to G requirements met. If A to G requirements are met by the time a kid graduates, not only are they set to go to a UC or a Cal college, but they are set up for success if they don't decide to go to college right out the gate or if they decide to go on to trade school. No matter what they choose to do, they are more educated and more set up for success. So those are my plans. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Ma?
I guess it's kind of hard to describe it as an issue-based promise directly. But like Jessica said, as far as just providing the best education that's available for all students, my promise is to really address it for all students. And that includes supporting innovative practices, increasing literacy and increasing the math skills and making those available for all students in all grades. There's a lot of kids who are unfortunately getting kind of passed on. And so some of the academics are not as rigorously held, for instance, as they could be. I mean, in the state of California, I think half of the students are not reading at grade level. And that's tragic. That's really tragic. So literacy across the board is really, really important to me and trying to make sure that we address academics.
Thank you very much. All right. I, I think we'll probably go on to the final question. And if you, I'll repeat it for you. We talked about it at the beginning of the forum. What question that we didn't ask you in this forum do you wish we had asked and why? And Ms. Spicer, you'll be first.
All right, thank you so much. So the question I would have liked to ask as me is actually who is supporting my campaign? And why? I am endorsed by nearly two hundred and sixty organizations, elected officials and community members, leaders. They include the Santa Clara County Democratic Party, the California Teachers Association, Planned Parenthood, South Bay Labor, over a hundred current and former elected, sixty-six of them, local trustees, with twenty-seven of the twenty-nine trustees that serve trustee area one. And I have donations from over two hundred individuals in our local area. And why are they supporting me? They are, they're ready for me to take on this role at the County Board of Education. And they know I have a proven record of representing local interests and they know I will hit the ground running to ensure that all students, no matter the situation that they're born into, get the best education possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Ma?
So I guess I would have actually a little different take as to the question that I wish that actually both of us had been asked. And that is with respect to fiduciary responsibility and how the boards that both of us are on have been able to be fiscally responsible with respect to, for instance, the bond that's being proposed by Los Altos School District. And how a lot of that is going towards a facilities plan, which, as I understand, has not been approved yet and also has not mentioned a couple of the important issues that are key to the facilities, like the Promise Park and Gym for the like the Promise Park and Gym for the city of Mountain View, and um you know, the the tenth school site. Um, I don't think that that's really mentioned in the facilities plan. And I think from a uh responsibility standpoint, that it's important for board members to be on top of um the big picture of where um funds are going um in the County Office of Ed. Most of our our um funding is restricted funding, so we we don't have a lot of flexibility. But we do have um some discretion with respect to um the priorities and and where programs are going and for some of the big-ticket items. Um, we are not allowed to uh put bonds or um parcel taxes on the ballot, but we do have construction.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto, I thank you candidates for your dedication in choosing to run for office and participating in this forum. I thank our audience for their engagement in the democratic process. For the November fifth general election, the Santa Clara County Leagues are also hosting forums for many other races. Visit the League of Women Voters of Santa Clara County website, where you can find videos of those forums. Check out votefouroneone.org. There you will find nonpartisan expanded information about candidates and ballot measures and links to other sources of information about the upcoming election. For the November fifth general election, all California voters will receive vote-by-mail ballots, which will be mailed starting October seventh. Vote early by mail or by dropping off your ballot at a secure ballot drop box. Visit a vote center on or before Election Day if you need assistance or require a replacement ballot. Find vote centers and days and hours of operation in your ballot information packet. Encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote in this election. Thank you all. Please vote on November fifth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Night to you all.